Once here. Something on that screen there, Jacob, if you're around there, you may need to push that got it button. Otherwise, Mr. Perry, you are good to go. Have a good meeting.
Thank you very much and apologies, everyone, for a couple of minutes of tardiness. We're gonna go ahead and call the May 19th meeting of the City of Zoning Board of Appeals to order. This will be a hybrid meeting with, as you can see, some of the select board members here in the hearing room. One of our members, Ms. Harrison, is participating via Zoom. And we will have members of the public, potentially some applicants participating via Zoom. Before we get started, I want to read, "The City of Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community." With that, we are going to proceed to our first application brought by Ronald and Nancy Davis of 2222 Azalea Place in Winter Park, Florida, where it will not be as warm as it's going to be in Cituate this weekend, requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 810.3 of the Cituate zoning bylaw, and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the alteration of a non-conforming structure previously used as a fire station to a single-family dwelling at 9 Mitchell Avenue in Cituate. And is our applicant present? Hello, how are you? Please come forward if you wouldn't mind and feel free to take these seats up here.
Sure.
If you mind. Welcome.
Thank you.
Want you to tell us a little bit quickly about our project.
So we had an opportunity to, when it came up for auction, we lived down the street and we had a house on one side.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the red house. So, anyway, it looked like a great project and I wanted to keep the footprint the same of the fire station just because of the history.
Yes.
And it came across and somebody else got it. And then that apparently fell through and then they called us. And we said, sure, we're still interested in potentially doing the project. So we have our architect there, our builders here, and we're very interested in doing the project.
Any questions? Plan? Do we have a plan showing the proposed improvement? Or I'm trying to figure out.
No, we haven't. This was just, as far as we had, just to redo the zoning.
To redo the zoning?
Where, residential?
Yeah. We're trying to figure out in the best, and this is meant really positively, why you guys are here. Yes.
We kind of questioned it too, but we did bring some plans that.
What did you, Bob? What zone are we in in this property?
R3.
Okay, so residents would be allowed?
Correct. Yeah, I think, I think the, you know, the argument for this is probably not needing to be made.
So.
It sounded a little surprising that we needed an argument considering you guys were the ones who sold it and wanted to redo it.
Sure, so who told you you didn't need to come first?
I got information from this board.
So from.
So we flew up here.
Okay. Are you requesting a building permit presently?
We will.
You will be. So you haven't yet, so no one denied a building permit. Is the lot under chat?
Yes, it will need relief from this board when a building permit is issued for the design.
I understand. So.
It doesn't, it doesn't need to change zoning, you have the classification.
Okay.
But it will need some.
We're gonna, we're gonna work, we're gonna work through this. So typically, when we get a, and I would probably, since you made the trip, encourage you to hang out for a minute after your hearing and see how some of these other special permits that are going to be before us tonight will go. You have a lot, Bob, and so typically I'd have the chart in front of me where it would say where this lot and this application was deficient. I understand why we don't, I understand there's some confusion. We have a lot that is non-conforming as to frontage, correct, Bob?
Correct.
As to lot area. And as to lot width. In that you won't be able to comply with lot width, which is measured through the front of the building or the center of the building, correct me?
The center of the building.
Through the center of the building, we measure how wide the lot is. And in R3, do I need 100 or 150, Bob?
100.
That's a big sheet, we're just looking at the chart.
We got it.
So we need 100, which you obviously can't have since your lot is only 80 feet wide. So those are the non-conforming characteristics of your lot. The other things that you'll be concerned with are what we call the building envelope combined with our setbacks. Presently, the building present here, which is not a home, but we can get into that in a minute, complies with your side setbacks, it complies with your rear setback, it does not comply with the 30-foot front setback. So we have a non-conforming lot as to lot area, frontage, and lot width. And we have a non-conforming structure as to frontage. You were changing the use, the use is presently, we'll call it public safety. Use is presently not residential. Fortunately, a residential use is allowed in this zone. When you apply for a building permit, you would need to come before the Zoning Board of Appeals in order to get a special permit.
That's the same.
That is this board.
Okay.
Because you are on what is a non-buildable lot. Now, it is a non-buildable lot that was built prior to it becoming a non-buildable lot, so it would be pre-existing non-conforming and very likely would qualify for relief from this board. Now, I've been on the board for longer than I care to admit. I haven't ever granted a special permit for a building permit that an application had not been received yet. But as you folks live in Florida, I want to consider for a minute if we can grant a special permit now.
Yeah, I think the only thing that we'd be missing would be any change to the footprint.
And.
Carbon plate, which would alter the setback.
You have, you have plans? We might be able to get. All right, so.
Gives us an idea then.
That's cool. Do you have concept architecturals that don't put it on the ground a lot?
The only thing that would be apparently different would be, we probably have to move that back.
Sure, as you may be surprised to learn, I know some builders are. Setbacks do not apply to uncovered decks and portions in the conversation.
That would be the only, there's no change to the footprint.
Would there be any plan to move the house further back from the street?
We don't want to, we wanted to try to preserve the appeal of that building because
Yes.
it's historic and it's cool. And I, you know, I just wanted to make it so that's, keep that outside structure kind of handsome of the appeal of the firehouse.
Gentlemen, sorry, just one second. Yes.
The appeal of a firehouse that's been converted to something that has really lead to that neighborhood.
I think I understand. What I'd like to discuss for a minute is, do any of you, or particularly you, Bob, see any issue with us granting a special permit for a home to be built on this lot in the footprint of the existing building, provided that it otherwise complies with the code? Really, as to height, right? The lot's not gonna change. The setbacks wouldn't change, though you wouldn't need further relief from us if you wanted to get further, even a little closer to the left or right. So really, I think we would be granting a special permit for a home that complied with the building envelope and was at least 10, 20 feet from Mitchell Avenue.
I would have no problem with that. I think, I think that's probably a fine idea. As Steve was mentioning to me, if we don't increase the living space by more than 20%, theoretically, I could issue a building permit directly, but in this circumstance, the way the zoning section of zoning bylaw is written, that applies to a house becoming a light, a slightly larger house.
This isn't a house.
It's residential.
I, I think, I think they need a special permit.
Yeah.
And when we get to public comment, I'm guessing that there might be one person potentially who would be sure that they disagree with that.
Let's put it this way, a special permit, as long as we're here and capable of doing it, wouldn't hurt.
They don't have to pay any extra money more than they've already paid, so there'll be, uh. Question for you folks, are you planning to go up?
No.
No.
So it's really, it's the square footage, that home will have the square footage of the existing structure.
Correct.
It's footprint one, it's probably footprint one.
No second floor at all.
No.
No, they have the building, there's a second floor.
So just to be clear, you don't need relief from this board to go up to the maximum that our zoning code allows?
No.
We wouldn't be in position to, to prevent you from doing that?
We're not really.
Yeah, so it's wrong.
It has a, it has a base, it has a main floor.
Yeah.
And it does have the second floor.
Yeah.
Second floor it is.
I understand. And you understand a little bit of our confusion, so typically, an applicant will come to this board because they would like a building permit and the building inspector denies that building permit typically because the building inspector feels that they don't have the authority to grant that building permit under our code. And then folks come to us when they need some flexibility in that code. This is a little unique in that we pretty much know at least the parts of the building permit that you're going to apply for that we would care about, but you haven't yet applied for. Put the, the horse before the horse a little bit, but I think we can do the work.
I'm gonna be misunderstood because I had thought this is what you had to do, this is what I thought at the beginning.
And it was probably a miscommunication because once you file the building permit, you would have to come to us, but I think we can work that out. Okay, so with that, do we have any questions or comments from the public regarding the request for relief from 9 Mitchell Avenue?
Mr. Yorkman. Because if others first, they can go, and I'll try him afterwards.
I think, I, we're just gonna go with you first, if that's okay?
That sounds great. If I, if I can.
Just your name and address for reference.
Steve Bjorkman, 861 Main Street in Norwell. Section 810.3.
Yep.
I think, and this is an unusual one for the board because it's not a house. Usually they deal with houses. But a non-conforming structure other than a single or a two-family. The Board of Appeals may allow the repair, alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change of a non-conforming structure other than a single or a two-family dwelling or structure accessory thereto. If the board makes a finding, a special permit, but a finding that such repair, alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change will not substantially, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. The repair, alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change of this non-conforming structure has to increase the existing non-conformity or create a new non-conformity. So I think that you just have to make a simple finding and it can change it into a house from a, something that's other than a single or a two-family.
I think someone else might argue, and this is really semantics because it doesn't matter because I think they didn't get their relief, is that that's a change to a non-conform, a change to a non-conforming structure. Other than, this is other than, but it's not a change to the firehouse. This is a change of a firehouse to, to a single-family home. I'm not sure that that, that section is meant to apply to this scenario.
But it can.
It could if we wanted to, but rather than get, than try to bend that section, I'd rather just see if we can give them their special permit. I understand your point and it's probably reasonable minds can differ, but I think that was meant to, we're making a minor change to a firehouse. That's gonna stay a firehouse. Anybody else have any questions or comments to the Mitchell Avenue application? And, yes, sir?
Hi, Kevin Kane, 6 Mitchell Avenue.
Thank you.
And I don't know if this is an appropriate question for this board, but maybe it's just for the people who want it. The, your, your desire is to make it a residential, well, yes?
Yeah.
Not a garage?
Well, it has a garage.
Yeah. I live right across.
So, so, sorry, the, the application and if we were to grant a special permit, our understanding, just to confirm for you, is that this is for a building permit for a single-family home? Yes. Not for another commercial structure, so, so maybe an important point of clarification is, this is a residential zone. Residents are, are allowed. I would have to look in the chart, but I am pretty confident that a non-residential use wouldn't be allowed or would only be allowed by a special permit. They are not seeking a change in use. They are not seeking a change to the existing firehouse. And I'm sure there's other non-zoning laws that prevent them from using it as a firehouse. So it's just, just for a home, single-family home. Not even, not a two-family, that would be a change in use, that would be a different, more complex application. Single-family home, just seems like maybe you're gonna be able to look at it and notice that maybe it used to be something other than a single-family home. I'm sure they'd be willing to share these. Actually looks pretty cool.
Well, that's the reason for the question.
Of course, and so you question, that makes sense without a doubt.
Well, one between that and the hookah lounge, but I decided that.
Tonight. You, you clearly weren't at town meeting, that's right. Otherwise, you would have thought that was more fun or maybe less fun.
No, I, I, it's exactly what we, we want definitely keep that, that structure.
Same.
Go ahead and sell it to their house.
Check on them. And we, do we have anyone participating via Zoom that has any questions or comments on 9 Mitchell Avenue? Susan, sorry, I, I didn't specifically ask if you did.
The only comment I had, and I think that's where you're going, is I did not think 810.3 applied in this situation. And I think that's where I have, okay.
Yeah, I, I understand Mr. Bjorkman's point. And I think if you want to be flexible with the words, you could probably make an argument that it does, but I'm not sure that was the intention and fortunately for these applicants, I don't, I don't think that, that's going to make a difference. I think they have a pretty valid special permit application. Anyone else? All right. I'll make a motion that the board grant the special permit for the modification or raise and reconstruction of the existing building at 9 Mitchell Avenue for the purposes of the construction of a single-family home, which is constructed either in the same footprint or in a separate footprint which complies with setbacks for side and rear and which is no closer to Mitchell Avenue than 10.8 feet. And complies with Cituate's zoning bylaw in all other regards, with, of course, the understanding that there'll be no changes to the existing non-conforming characteristics of the lot. Do we have a second? I, I guess I'll modify it, that we find that such an alteration or raise and reconstruction would not create any new non-conformities and would not be substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
I second that.
Can I ask, are they raising and reconstructing? Sorry, can I ask, was it a raise and reconstruct?
So.
I didn't think they were gonna raise and reconstruct.
Okay, it's not clear from the plans, and if you folks haven't gotten in there already, and maybe you have, sometimes we get down to the bones and maybe Mr. Bjorkman could agree and, and it makes more sense to knock down that wall, those walls that we thought we were gonna keep and, and put them back up in a better way. And we don't want to be in a situation where you have to come back to this board because it's no longer an alteration or, or, or an interior renovation. So, so that's why I, that's why I craft the decision that way, to allow for either, because I, I assume that it, it wouldn't make a difference to this board if you were taking, taking down all four walls or leaving all four of them. What we're concerned with is the footprint and the setbacks in the front. Uh, so we have a second for that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Fantastic, so you will still need to apply for your building permit and, um. Yes, and I would suggest doing that quickly just because there's, there's typically a timeframe in which a building permit is filed, a special permit, and, and then there's appeal periods. We're doing it a little bit out of order. I think it might be in everyone's interest if you, if you proceeded with your building permit application as quick as possible. Yes, Bob?
Yeah, in fact, I think we can't issue the permit, as you know, until all the appeals are run. To, well, until the decision is written, which often takes a while.
That's true.
Filed with the town clerk.
So I.
All of that and then filed with the register.
That's true, so typically, he'd have an application, but you wouldn't have a building permit until this process was done, so I, yes, it's fine. I'd recommend still getting a building permit application in.
Okay.
As we go through, just to keep the process moving.
Sure. Absolutely.
But we will get you a, a decision. Thank you very much. Good luck with the project. Thank you.
Oh, you need your mop.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And, uh, I mean, I'll take that. Yep.
All right.
You got it?
Yep. You might read this one?
Yep. All right, so next up, on our second application of Nicholas and Diane Akamando of 31 Peggety Beach Road, Cituate, Mass, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and Sections 950.2D and E10.2 of the Cituate zoning bylaw and/or any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to construct a second-floor addition onto a dimensionally conforming, single-family residential dwelling on a pre-existing, non-conforming lot in the R3 zoning district at 31 Peggety Beach Road, which will not expand to the existing building footprint or create new non-conformities. Do we have anybody on 31 Peggety Beach Road here today?
We have attorney Delisi, dating via Zoom, it looks like.
Excellent.
Okay.
There he is.
Yes, hi. I wish I could be joining you in person tonight, but I can't. I represent the owners of the property. Pretty straightforward application we have here. We have an existing 900-square-foot, single-story cottage in Peggety Beach Road, the property. The applicant recently obtained a special permit from the planning board to construct an addition going up, not out, same footprint for a, uh, about a 700 and square, 708-square-foot addition onto the second floor. The height of the house after the construction would be about 24 feet in height, so it's well within the height requirements. So the house is fully dimensionally conforming, the lot is less than thousand, uh, less than 6,000 square feet in a 10,000-square-foot zone and has less than 50 feet of frontage and width in 100, in a 100-foot zone. So since we are increasing the gross floor area by approximately 79%, it requires under Section 810.2, a finding by the board. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions?
I took a ride by there today. It was pretty straightforward.
Yeah, you said, we're entirely in the same footprint, just going up.
That's correct.
Susan, any questions?
I did not. This was straightforward to me.
No? Oh, anything to add?
No, we got on the zoning aspect. It's in FEMA velocity zone 17. So we'll have to look at how it, what it means to you to comply with FEMA and NASCO regulations as to flood elevation.
Of course.
From a zoning perspective, we're not in the flood plain, so we don't need a special permit.
Right, from that standpoint.
You're not in the Cituate flood zone, right?
Right. Yep. Does anyone from the audience have any questions or comments on the application on 31 Peggety Beach Road? None here? Anyone participating via Zoom, you could raise your real hand by turning on your video or your virtual hand using the options menu. Doesn't look like it. All right. We have a motion. Make a motion that the board find the request for a special permit for the construction of a second floor at 31 Peggety Beach Road on a dimensionally conforming, single-family residential dwelling on a basis of non-conforming law. Will not, that we find it will not expand the existing footprint, it will not create any new con, non-conformities, and it will not be substantially more detrimental or harmful to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure as set forth on the plan dated 2/11/22 by McKenzie Engineering Group. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. I'll, I'll write the decision, get it over to you guys.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a great night.
Thank you. John Allen used to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's helped me come along. All right. Moving right along, we're gonna move to our third application brought by Michael and Ellen Bernier of 91 Elm Street in Cituate, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL 48, Section 6, and Section 810.2 of the Cituate zoning bylaw, and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow a second-story addition to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling at 91 Elm Street in Cituate, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. Bjorkman, welcome.
Yes, here representing Berniers, and this one's gonna be probably the simplest one because I've been involved in.
Really?
Doesn't have 100 feet of frontage, doesn't have a lot width. The structure completely complies with all setbacks. And they're basically taking a single-story wing on the west side of the house, turning it into a two-story wing. And the second story is going to extend about two feet closer to the street, but still further back than the front of the main house. And it's 52 feet back from the street anyways, so it still needs all setbacks. And the sole purpose of being here is it is over 20%. It's 26.1% of an increase in the dwelling.
I got it. The existing slab garage is not being touched.
No.
Can't think of a question. Yeah. Ed? Sam? As you said, pretty straightforward. Everything we're adding is entirely within the envelope. Sam, as you said, pretty straightforward. Everything we're adding is entirely within the envelope. And uh the last of the lot. Gentlemen, everybody on the board?
Are you meeting the existing red side? You just go up. It is, it's, yeah, we're not increasing the height at all. It's lower than the main box allows when the addition comes in. Um and just so you understand, all all houses around this are larger, so it's it's actually gonna be a really attractive addition.
Nice. Susan, anything to add?
No. Thank you.
Uh what about you?
Uh no, nothing about that. I'm just a little curious reading the the plan. Steve, is the bath laundry area within the existing envelope of the house?
Yeah, no question about Mike, I think. I have not been inside the house.
On the floor plan. My oriental floor plan with the with the site plan.
Oh, what's the front? Where is the front of the house? On this? Yeah, you can see the front door of the house.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's just what I thought.
Yes, I'll sit back.
So your house now starts right there.
Yeah.
And this is built inside the existing house. Okay, thank you.
Anyone participating on Zoom have a question regarding the ninety-one Elm Street application? Okay, turn on your busy video and raise your hand or raise your virtual Zoom hand. Doesn't look like it. Anyone in the audience, questions or comments on ninety-one Elm Street? No? Okay, I will make a motion that the board find that the proposed addition at ninety-one Elm Street as shown on a plan prepared by Ross Engineering dated March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, does not create any new non-conformities and to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. There's a second.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. You guys have it?
Thank you very much.
Of course.
You're welcome. Forty years of doing this, I've never had one like that.
Alright. Keep up the good work.
That's a long time, I'll be back.
Alright.
Thank you.
Good luck. Uh we're gonna move on to our
We're being excessively different all tonight.
Fourth application. I don't think they're all gonna be. Our fourth application brought by Michael Sylvester of one eighty-four Captain Pierce Road in Situate requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section six and Section eight ten point two of the bylaw and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the construction of an addition to a conforming dwelling on a pre-existing, non-conforming lot at one eighty-four Captain Pierce Road in Situate. Good evening.
Good evening. Gregory Morris, Rich, Virginia Moore, Engineering. With me is the property owner, Michael Sylvester. As we're just writing to the record, this is a request for a special permit in accordance with the zoning bylaw E ten one two as well as the section, that's the amount of law, forty-eight, Section six, finding the properties of one eighty-four Captain Pierce Road. It's located in the R two zoning district. Uh this lot is non-conforming solely with respect to lot area. It has nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-five square feet, where twenty thousand is required. The house was built nineteen forty-seven, is twelve hundred and thirty-two square feet. Depicted on the plan, you'll see the house shaded in brown. The proposal here is to construct an addition, which I've highlighted. That addition complies with all zoning setbacks, but it increases the floor area. The finished floor area will be two thousand seventy-six square feet. It represents a sixty-eight and a half percent increase. Again, it conforms with all zoning setbacks, we're short by approximately fifty square feet of lot size.
So so you have a lot that's deficient by forty-five square feet
About the area.
out of what required twenty thousand. And you're going to put an addition on that complies with all the building setbacks and only takes the overall size of the house to eighteen hundred and eighty-nine square feet.
Or is it eight?
Two thousand seventy-six.
Seventy-six square feet. Or is this the finish?
I understand. Growth, oh yes. Is there a second plan?
No, it's, yeah.
Oh, the plan, the plan says eighteen eighty-nine. No.
Two thousand seventy-six. There was a revised plan that was just submitted.
I I'm sure I probably have it here and I didn't, I grabbed it off, well. I uh I, all jokes aside, and we have your revised plan, that says my point stands. You're not even building a crazy large house. I honestly can't think of any questions or concerns about an application fitting into these set of facts. And we have, we have a double frontage lot. We are beyond thirty feet from both streets. It's uh keep our street going. I think we have a straightforward application, so let's go on to the second. Um I don't have anything. Anyone else on the board?
Susan?
No. No. Bob? No, this is uh but for forty-five square feet, um about the size of a car. You uh you would not have to be here. Yeah, adding to my math, but that's right. Anyone from the audience have any questions or comments on the application for the the addition at one eighty-four Captain Pierce Road? No. Any anyone on Zoom? No. No. I'll make a motion that the board find that the proposed additions at one eighty-four Captain Pierce Road, shown on a plan drawn by Morse Engineering and dated three sixteen twenty twenty-two, do not create any new non-conformities and to the extent they intensify any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Susan?
Aye.
Guys have it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yep. You stay a long story. We're going to move on to our fifth application brought by Brian McCarthy of ninety-five Captain Pierce Road in Situate requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL forty-eight, Section six and Section eight ten point two of the Situate bylaw and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the construction of an addition to a conforming dwelling on a pre-existing, non-conforming lot at ninety-five Captain Pierce Road in Situate, increasing gross floor area by more than twenty percent.
Good evening, uh Ryan McCarthy. I am the property owner. I've lived uh ninety-five Captain Pierce Road since two thousand fifteen. When we moved in, it was just my wife and I. We since have had three children, the walls are starting to get a little tight, so we are looking to put an addition off of the back. Uh my understanding that a special permit was required because we don't have the proper frontage. We don't have seventy-five feet of frontage. Um the lot is more narrow in the front and it gets wider as you go back. Um the rear setback is three hundred and seventy-one feet uh for the addition that we're proposing. It's a twenty-one by twenty-six uh addition off of the back. We're also looking to add another bedroom and a master bath above the kitchen, which is in the same footprint as the existing structure. Um the proposed addition complies with the setbacks for the front, the sides, and the rear. Um and it, the lot is of relatively larger size, over fifty-seven thousand square feet.
Is the, is the garage that we see on the plan a new, will that be a new addition as well?
No, the garage is there.
Garage is existing.
Yes.
I got you. So the the blue is what what's gonna be the deal? Right, but it's not, not on your bill.
Right, I was just confused because the garage had the same blue underlying around it.
The garage has recently moved over, which is
Oh, I got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's there. It's it's the driveway is there.
Thirty-two by twenty-four garage has has been around for a while.
For about a year, I guess.
You built the garage a year ago.
So if this is where it gets somewhat complicated.
Yeah.
My neighbor, the Asmar, is uh
Yeah.
raised and reconstructed their single-family home, and they had a detached two-family garage, which they were going to knock down.
Yep.
I knocked on their door and said, I don't know if it's economical or
Right.
possible, but kind of look into it.
You stole their garage.
I stole their garage.
Okay.
And we have a building permit and that's probably why that was blue, because this was the site plan that we used to move over the garage.
I got you. They didn't need, did they get a special permit for the garage? Did they need one?
I don't think they needed one. They got a building permit from moving, moving the building, trying to win their foundation.
Yeah. Because the lot's not conforming.
Not living space.
It's not looking like that. Okay. I don't know.
Yeah.
They go get them.
Yes.
It's something different way, but that's the way they thought of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Alright, I'll have been not condoning the theft of the garage.
Well, with permission.
Have any questions? We are once again we're on a very large lot that is of a unique shape, so we don't have uh frontage or width. But we are otherwise complying with all setbacks and obviously with height. And if we have the proposed height on here, but of course it will need to comply with the bylaw.
Correct, yeah, and the height is not greater than what's currently there and complies with all.
Anyone have any?
Question?
Yes, please.
I had a question. Um the application, the front, frontage said thirty and the plan said thirty point nine. Or?
Oh, are you, are you looking at ninety-five Captain Pierce Road?
Yeah. Oh, is that the wrong, is that not the right one? Hold on.
I think so. Looks like a uh a trap. We got a trapezoid here coming back from Captain Pierce.
Okay, well, I missed my question on the last one then. Darn it.
That's alright. I I have to make some of my plans here in the room, so you can go fast. Anyone else? Questions? Bob, any other questions?
No.
Do we have any questions from the audience on the ninety-five Captain Pierce Road application?
Just a comment.
Yes.
I'm Kathleen Asmar.
Yes.
One oh one Captain Pierce Road. This little house has been a beautiful home. It's um was a starter house. We get new neighbors every two to three years because they come, they're ladies and they're These people are wonderful. They take beautiful care and we're looking forward to the second addition coming.
That's wonderful.
Thank you. I didn't even pay her this late.
I know. I was gonna say, the check that he wrote you, that's gotta be on your W two.
Those chocolate chip cookies were on.
There may be a care package.
No. That's, that's great to hear. Wonderful. We we love a neighbor endorsement. We don't get them enough.
Right.
Anybody online? No. Alright. I'll make a motion that the board find that the proposed addition at ninety-five Captain Pierce Road shown on the plan prepared by by James McGrath and dated March twelfth, twenty twenty-two, does not create any new non-conformities and to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Susan?
Aye.
Here we go. Who wants it? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Really appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll take it.
Thank you, Jeff. Alright. Our sixth application brought by Todd Roman of Sixth Egypt Beach Road in Situate requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL forty-eight, Section six and Section eight ten point two of the Situate zoning bylaw and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the construction of a single-story addition to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling at Sixth Egypt Beach Road in Situate, increasing gross floor area by more than twenty percent. How are you, gentlemen?
Good, sir. How are you?
Not bad. Why don't you give us a quick idea of what's going on? Name for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Todd Roman. Uh my wife and I bought the house at Sixth Egypt Beach Road, uh just at the turn here. Uh it's a small house, just over a thousand square feet. Uh she has a back injury, so we wanted to make it a little bit larger, and what we proposed is to go out the back of the house with three pipe four inch addition. One story, um the setbacks to the house would be smaller uh than the existing structure. And then we made the setbacks in the back and on the side. The front, I think, misses the setback by I think six inches, I think it was.
That looks right.
Real close. So um that's what's going on with uh our proposal. They're asking for a lead on that front.
It looks like six inches of front setback and just over six feet of frontage. Otherwise, you wouldn't need to be here for the addition. But the addition you are putting on obviously isn't gonna change a lot and otherwise complies with the building envelope. And our square footage change, just for the record, we have eleven ninety-six now. We're going to twenty-eight seventy-one, so that's roughly uh hundred and thirty, thirty five. Yeah, hundred and fifty. Here we go. Um I have to go more than that. Oh shit.
I got three hundred and fifty.
Yeah, that's right. Um. Alright. I do. Have any other questions? Honestly, garage isn't moving, curb cut's not moving. Ed's not being touched in the back. That's all I got. And Chris?
Gentlemen?
Ed? Got it, hundred forty percent. Susan, any?
Is it a hundred forty? Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, because that was, that was my question. It wasn't, yeah.
Yeah, hundred forty percent. Bob, anything else to consider?
Uh no, I was glad to see it's in the uh Zonex flood zone, so we don't have to worry about that kind of thing.
There we go. Anyone on our Zoom call have any questions or comments regarding the application at Sixth Egypt Beach? You can turn on your video or raise your virtual hand and hear you out. Doesn't look like it. Anyone in the audience? Yes, sir?
I have just a comment.
Sure, just your name and address for the record.
Uh my name is Manda Juski. I'm living in twelve Egypt Beach Road, and we are four neighbors here, just to support Todd. We like him and we want him welcoming our neighborhood. He's a hardworking and excellent father of the children.
Yeah, wouldn't be.
We're not paid to.
Even if you were, I'd like to support the neighborhood. This is fantastic. Thank you very much.
We are a very tight neighborhood, so.
That's fantastic. This seems like a very nice addition. Anyone else? No. Online? Alright. I'll make a motion that the board find that the proposed addition at Sixth Egypt Beach Road, shown on a plane, a plan, excuse me, drawn by James McGrath and dated April second, twenty twenty-two, does not create any new non-conformities and to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Guys have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get to this decision, absolutely. Thank you. Of course. Move up.
Thank you.
No, move up for the decision. Mike?
Probably me.
Susan's up.
Am I up? I'll take it.
I think you're up.
Okay.
Everybody else take one. And Jeff got one. Yeah, I was six, five and one, six. We are going to move on to our seventh application. Continued from April twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, brought by Kenton Bomber Zone of Seventeen Gate Circle in Situate. Requesting a variance in accordance to nine fifty point two C of the Situate zoning by law, specifically seeking a variance from the requirements of section five, twenty point four A, which mandate a hundred and fifty-foot non-deserving buffer zone to tributaries in the Water Resource Protection District for the construction of a single-family dwelling in Five Williamsburg Lane in Situate. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. So why don't you, uh, tell us a little bit about what we have happening here?
That's all right. So, uh, what we have here are, uh, I'm James Edgar Creed Jr., by the way, Creed Michael Marshall, representing Kenton Bomber, Bomber Zone with your petition for this variance. The property as shown on the plan is located entirely in the Water Resource Protection District, which, um, has a one hundred and fifty-foot setback. That effectively renders the lot unbuildable in the Sartre Zone. The, the history of the lot is that there was a, uh, an iron pipe that crossed through the middle of the, the lot back in the seventies. This Bomber Zone, uh, this Bomber Zone's father, uh, started dealing with the town of Situate to move that into an easement, twenty-foot easement to the south. And the, the drainage from Country Way was high piped, uh, again to the south. So, that, the quick proposal there was that that would aid in allowing the slot to be buildable because that, that carbureted pipe that was in the middle of the lot was moved to the side of the lot. Subsequently, the Water Resource Protection District came into play and the literal enforcement of the Water Resource Protection.
I apologize. Go ahead. Just for one second. Are you having trouble finding the plan as well?
Yeah.
This must continue.
This is continuing, so we don't have.
So we don't have a revised plan?
No.
Oh, that was my mistake.
That was my mistake as well. I apologize.
No problem.
Um, once you know the time.
Yeah.
Helps everyone.
Um, thank you.
So in any event, the literal enforcement of the, of the setback renders the lot, in essence, unbuildable and inanimate and useless.
Yes.
Um, under, under the various decisions that I have cited to you in the, uh, in the materials that I provided to you, which for disclosure purposes, I li- liberally took from Attorney Brodsky, who was previously before you in the back.
Yes.
Uh, I thought he did a very good job and, and I wanted to give him credit and give him credit for his work. It, it, the end result is that, uh, and Greg will, you know, will present the performance standards, um, that, that he's employed. But for the, the setback issue, the lot meets all of the requirements and would meet the requirements under the Water Resource, under your Water Resource Protection District regulations, again, but for the hundred and fifty foot setback. And he fucking demonstrated that on the plan. So we believe that under those circumstances, you're facing a situation where, um, you can derogate from the literal requirements of your zoning by law as every variance requires you to do, because the net result if you do not is that you'd be denying the Bomber Zones any economic use of the property. And that's really not the purpose of the Water Resource Protection District as it was presented at special town meeting.
Okay.
That's a, that's a legal argument. Now I'll let Greg give you the, the nuts and bolts, so to speak.
Sure. And then we'll, we'll come back to, uh, to the legal argument.
Sure. So, for the record, Greg Morse, registered engineer, Morse engineering. This property located at the corner of Country Way and Williamsburg Lane. This was originally the leadout during the Williamsburg Lane subdivision when that road was laid out, I believe, back in the fifties. Uh, this was the first lot on the left-hand side. Looking at the plan, Country Way is on the left, Williamsburg Lane is on the bottom. This property is in the R two zoning district of this location. It is also in the Water Resource Protection overlay district. The lot itself fully conforms with zoning requirements for frontage as well as land area. It's completely upland land area. It's not in a floodplain. It has all of the zoning requirements to be considered a buildable lot. At the time the subdivision was built, there was an existing drainage pipe which traversed the property. We depicted that on the plan in this location. That existing drainage pipe was moved, um, at some point in the seventies to the southern lot line. You'll see that there's a twenty-foot drainage easement and there's a drain pipe. That's a drain that essentially drains the catch basins in Country Way. It doesn't drain any upgrading wetland resource areas. It doesn't drain any sort of floodplain areas. It's just the catch basins out in Country Way. That pipe was relocated essentially to make room for a house on this lot. Again, this was a fully approved subdivision lot at that time. Nineteen eighty-seven, when the Water Resource Protection District was enacted by the town, that established under section five, twenty point four, the one hundred and fifty-foot do not disturb buffer to any tributary to the tech factory pond reservoir. The outlet pipe for that drainage, that outlet pipe is at the back corner of the lot right here. Effectively becomes the start of a tributary where the discharge from these catch basins and this drain manhole then traverses in a suddenly direction to the reservoir, which is in excess of a thousand feet away. But from that point, the one hundred and fifty-foot setback is this red line. So you'll see that the entirety of the zoning envelope where you could build a house or a structure of any kind in this property is within that hundred and fifty-foot no disturb buffer. What we've proposed here is we've proposed to construct a single-family home. A single-family home doesn't allow use in the R two district. It's an allowed use in your Water Resource Protection overlay district as well. I've shaded in brown. It's a three-bedroom house. Um, we've located a septic system. Uh, the septic system is on the north side of the house between Williamsburg Lane and the front door of the house. The septic system would be a denitrification septic system, uh, so it would have enhanced water treatment prior to discharge to the leachin field. We've proposed roof dry wells to take any water coming off of the roof and infiltrate it into the ground. And we've proposed a rain garden at the back of the property to take any water that's coming off of driveway surface or lawn surfaces and treat that. Section five, twenty point four, the Water Resource Protection District guideline, uh, specifically addresses those issues. When you are doing work in the resource or in the overlay district, it limits you specifically to fifteen percent total impervious area on the lot, which would comply with, as well as promoting infiltration through the use of dry wells and rain garden type systems, which again, we have proposed in this case. Turn it back over to Attorney Creed.
Sure. Guessing at this point you want to know what we think.
That would be nice.
All right. So, his application was, was before us, was continued with, with counsel. Really was the same application. You're looking from a, for a variance.
Mm-hmm.
From our zoning by law. We're familiar with the variance standard. Just so everyone else is familiar with the variance standard. Really, it's a two-prong test and I'll, I'll simplify it for everyone, so we don't have to read all the words. And owing to the circumstances of the lot, a literal enforcement of the bylaw would be a substantial hardship to the property owner. Is test one, really is. The lawyers wrote it longer than that, as we tend to do, but that's what it boils down to. For me, there's no question you meet prong one. As you noted, enforcing the bylaw as written would turn this from a buildable lot, which it would be a buildable lot, but for this particular bylaw, and make it not buildable lot. If that's not a substantial hardship, I don't know what is. The second prong is that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Let's put public good and the less than exact definition of that aside for a moment. The bylaw very specifically states that there shall be no construction within a hundred and fifty feet of a tributary. You're asking us to allow construction within a hundred and fifty feet of a tributary. So, the intent of not allowing that construction was to protect the water source. So for me, if I'm going to consider granting a variance, I want to know how we are going to protect the water source from the jeopardy it would be placed in in regards to construction and occupation. I think that was also the intent. Given that we are well within a hundred and fifty feet of a tributary, I don't hear you arguing that this isn't a tributary.
That, that was gonna be my question. Do you have an argument?
Well, I do.
Okay. Let's start with that, because it, well, if you win that one, this, this gets a lot simpler.
Allohu'ee. From our perspective, for it to be a tributary, it would have to be coming from some wetland resource area. What, what we're looking at in this particular case.
Hang, well, hang on a second. Right. If we had a mountain and rain was draining down from a mountain, that could certainly be a tributary, right? That would be coming from a water.
Well, yeah, but let me, let me finish the, finish the story. The, the water we're talking about is the drainage from Country Way.
Okay.
Which is high piped, under the ground.
Yeah.
In the twenty-foot easement.
Right.
And then opens up at the, really at the, at the tail end of the lot, on the suddenly end of the lot.
Yeah.
So what we're talking about is protecting drainage.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that that's not what the, what the intent of the bylaw was, was to protect street drainage or storm drain water. But, let's, let's take it. It's water.
Sure.
It ends up in a, in another, in a, in a reservoir on the road, okay?
Yeah.
So then the question is, how can you grant this relief and yet still meet the, the intent of the bylaw? And the intent of the bylaw was to ensure that the quality of the water was maintained.
Yes.
I would say that the quality of the water that we're talking about is significantly less than drinking water as it exits that, that high pipe, as it's taking, um, you know, petroleum and other chemicals from the street, transiting it down that, uh, concrete pipe and then into the, into the open area, which is, which has been declared a tributary.
Yes.
So, what you can do and what we've, what, what I think Greg has done by the installation and, um, proposal to put a rain garden in, is we're going to filter whatever runoff or whatever drainage, uh, comes from this lot before it gets to that tributary. I would, I would suggest that the water that's gonna come off the lot, to the extent that it comes off the lot and doesn't recharge, is gonna be cleaner than what is in that tributary when it gets there. We've also suggested, and you can impose as a condition, that, uh, only organic fertilizers be used and that that be a D restriction on the lot.
Yes.
The, uh, we've already proposed a FAST system. So, I mean, that's gonna end up, uh, my experience with FAST systems is that, that, that gets you a water quality and denitrification that is, is almost impossible to.
We take an, an explanation of the FAST system back to Lanning's terms for, for a moment, not from the lawyer. Sure. Either of you, I can, I can share either team. You wouldn't want my explanation.
So, the FAST system essentially is a wastewater treatment plant that is designed for residential home application. Where you would have a typical septic tanks in your backyard and then leaching field. This replaces the septic tank with this miniature wastewater treatment plant. It introduces bacteria, it introduces oxygen into the system, so that the resultant is, is that the water, once it leaves that tank, it goes out to the leaching field, it is essentially the clean water at that point. That's the FAST system.
So, to go back to what I was saying, you're really, you're not going after whether or not this is a tributary. You're going after that we have a hardship and relief can be granted without creating any threat to the public good or derogating from the intent of the bylaw. And your contention there is you, you're not adding any water to the tributary that isn't better than the water in the tributary.
Correct. I mean, you can call it a tributary, but ultimately, I think you have to look at where that water comes from and, and, and what, what the resultant water is once it gets out of that pipe. And it doesn't magically go through the concrete pipe and get clean. It, it's street drainage. And it's called a tributary, all right? I mean, if, if we, if we live with the, the, its strict definition as tributary, it's tributary of dirty water.
Yeah.
And we're not, we're not contributing to that. In fact, the water, the water that is gonna come off this lot, it's gonna be sullied once it goes into that tributary, to the extent any of it gets there.
I understand your point and I, it was a point I didn't want to make without it being made by an engineer and without it being made by an applicant. It's funny, we have a forty B pending before this board and there is, I, I've spoken at that hearing about what, what the, what the butters and the town and maybe even what I would like to deny as a, as a citizen of the town. And then there's what I know I can deny and what I think if I denied, it would be very likely to be overturned, given Massachusetts law and case history. And I think that you have a valid variance application if the contentions you are making about the quality of the water and the low likelihood of any runoff into the tributary to begin with and to the extent there is runoff from the tributary, it's gonna be making things better and not worse. That's really where I stand. I want to hear from the public on that. I know we have some, uh, I think we have a, a member of, of a town, an interested town board present. Yes, but before we do that, yes.
You, you propose, you know, said that we can imply a restriction that some use natural fertilizer. I find the enforceability of that almost impossible. Once we write the paper, when someone's building a house, they're gonna put down their scots and they don't, is there a way to prevent any runoff from even going there?
Sure. I think what we tried to employ here was, we've also proposed, what you see in the darker green, which is a a natural vegetated buffer. There, we're proposing, um, to maintain a fifty-foot of natural vegetation that wouldn't be touched at all beyond what's the lawn, beyond what's the rain garden. So you've got a fifty-foot natural filter strip essentially before the tributary as well. And I, I understand your point about enforcement, which is why, I mean, the, the best we can do is a D restriction, because then everyone knows it. You know, you, you can't deny a sign of D. Well, of course you could, but it, it's not an argument you're gonna win. And, and the D restriction will be there. Also, for what, what Greg's saying, the, the best filtration is natural. So, so that, that area is going to do much more than anything else we could do by way of, um, you know, by way of science.
So, if we were to grant a variance, any restrictions or conditions that we grant appear in the variance, that could be recorded, we could require that they, that any future deed on the property reference the restrictions and conditions in the variance and that'll be a condition of maintaining the home on it. So, lenders would know about it, prospective purchasers would know about it, and as to enforcement, a butters would know about it and they would have the recorded document to show it and they would be a lot more likely to, uh, keep an eye on things and mention it if they saw a problem and bring that to attention. Susan?
I, I just wanna, I did want to mention that we do define tributary. Um, so, I know it's a little later, but, um, it's hard to say it's not a tributary, but I do, I I do agree that ultimately it's where the water flows and into a Class A water resource or water source.
Yeah.
We don't deny that it's a tributary.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But the ultimate result is that it flows into, even if it's artificial or not
That's right.
natural.
Anyone else on board? Bob? Oh, go ahead.
Would any type of maintenance of that rain garden be part of that deed as well, so as it?
We have we have the authority to raise whatever restrictions and conditions or ongoing maintenance obligations that we see fit in granting a
Yeah, it seems that the provisions you've mentioned are worthwhile, but I think it's just how do you enforce and maintain it other than with a deed?
Yes.
You know, more or less a jerk that buys the place, like you said, he's gonna build a
Fill the rain garden.
He's gonna be out there with his Scotts fertilizer and, you know, everything else.
Yep. That's right.
But the neighbors can say, hey, there's a restriction there.
Correct. The neighbors could say, hey, there's a restriction there. The penalty for violation of that restriction isn't not being able to use your garage and your shed anymore. It's you can revoke a variance. Make the home, not build it.
Yeah.
It's hard to kick someone out of the home they live in, but filing paperwork about revoking a variance is a default on a mortgage.
Right.
It's an inability to refi, it's an inability to sell.
Right.
So it's not going to be worth someone's while to make sure they're using cheaper fertilizer just so they could have a nicer lawn. If we go that route. We do have some teeth there in that. These are conditions so that you can have a buildable lot. And if you don't need the conditions, you don't have a buildable lot. Bob? Anything? Or it's not a speak now for everyone who's here for the bottom.
I get it. You know, however, they have had this discussion and they have no effect. I was on the planning board several years ago when the White Ash Farm subdivision was permitted.
Yes.
And that subdivision abuts the same tributary adjacent to this lot that we're talking about.
Yes.
And at that time, the planning board went through an extensive discovery period, if you will, with various members of BEP and other scientific types and determined for their purposes in their view and argue that yes, this is certainly a tributary. And it's a tributary all the way up to very close to the street. So it doesn't become a tributary at some point, you know, kind of in the future.
Right.
And I think we've, you know, we've agreed to that here. The point I wanted to make is the planning board then conditioned the developer very strictly with a 150-foot, not only no bill, but no disturb zone.
Yes.
Between anything that happened in that development and the tributary.
Yes. That developer was able to build their development and give that space.
Yes. You could, yes, of course, the developer ended up with three lots. And in fact, did not ask for a variance. So that issue never specifically came up to my recollection.
So I yeah, I've mentioned this before and I, and I wanna say this because I would like to hear from the public on it and from many members of our town boards. This I think it's a poorly drafted bylaw. I think its intent is admirable. I think its intent is important. But it makes lots non-buildable. It makes them entirely non-buildable by the letter of the bylaw, no if-ens or buts about it. And the objective that it's trying to create, in my opinion, and I'd be interested if someone could disagree with me with science, can be achieved and the lots can still be built up. It might be more expensive or more time-consuming. It might be too expensive or too time-consuming to protect the tributary that's 149 feet away and still built, but it can be done. And that the bylaw doesn't account for that, or even better, if the bylaw had put forth some even very onerous conditions on building within a certain buffer from a tributary. In my opinion, it would be a lot easier to hold up. If I have an applicant who's seeking a variance and is making the contention to this board that anything that goes into that tributary, first, that nothing will go into that tributary and that if anything does, it'll be cleaner than the water in that tributary. And I deny their variance application, I feel like I'm denying a variance application that can go to, on appeal, and prove that it met the variance application. I'd rather, and then in my opinion, it gets easier for the next person to get a variance. I'd rather grant the variance with conditions and not be concerned if the conditions are rather complicated and even if they're somewhat difficult or expensive for the applicant to get, will protect the water course. That's where I'm coming from. Now, I'm coming from, they're admitting that I don't know if the conditions that the applicant is proposing are sufficient to protect the water course. It's just, we're outside my area of expertise. So that's part of what I'm certain we need to confront.
I did have one question. Down Williamsburg Lane, on the plan to the right. So following the Antermin Rain Channel, if you will, what are the next sort of property or two properties now? What is occurring to use?
There's, they're all developed residential properties. Down Williamsburg Lane, the property we, the next one's on Country Way, again, it's a developed property.
Right.
As well.
And as far as you know, there are no deed restrictions? They were not pursuant to a variance?
No, they were, they were all built prior to 1987.
Right.
I did do a little research and there had been building permits issued on over a dozen lots in town that are within the 150-foot setback. But the houses that generally, we all predate that 1987.
They predate.
So that is another complication. Bob, I think you can confirm this. I believe this board has granted several building permits for the alteration of homes within 150 feet.
Or extension.
Or extensions of homes. Which again, is something I would raise about as an applicant who had a variance denied. In that we've granted those and we haven't raised these conditions to further protect the water course.
And Bob, do you know, in fact, either of you know, if any special septic considerations were put in place for any of those homes, either when they were built or when they were expanded?
When they were built, they would have been built prior to the creation of the bylaw. And when they were expanded, if they added a bedroom, I'm certain I've been on the board for relief granted for at least four or five residences within 150 feet. And I don't recall adding conditions to those. I can't say I'm certain that we didn't, to be honest. Or thinking back on it.
If bedrooms were added, and I don't recall a specific instance where that was the case.
Yeah.
I'd have fallen to the board of health
Right.
to judge the adequacy of the existing residences. So a board would not have been there.
Yeah. Right. But in case somebody knew or was familiar with it, I'd have.
Yeah.
So I'd have. Yeah. Right. But in terms of the disturbance, there'd obviously be disturbance and it's something I've mentioned in the past before that I felt the town should take a look at, that the that the bylaw shouldn't be so black and white and that there should be more conditions or that it should go to another town board for a determination of what steps need to be taken to protect the water course. Now, admittedly, I didn't follow up more than voicing that concern in this hearing, so that's on me.
But again, you know, what I'm trying to do is look at this and sort of weigh the harm, right? Where are we, as a town, willing to do X? And where here the applicant is willing to do Y, which is protected. You know, I think it all feeds into the analysis.
Yeah, I'm also concerned, somewhat similar to a 40B, I have to look back to my case law. I'm not familiar with a denial of a variance being overturned and the court turning it back to the zoning board to get another bite at the apple on raising conditions or restrictions.
Yeah, usually they just grant.
I think usually they just grant the variance.
You say the variance is granted.
Or bill. You know, which is not to say that this applicant wouldn't do the right thing anyway, but I'd rather have them as a deed restriction. But
Okay.
Right now, what I'd rather do is hear from some folks that want to get
Susan, has she, yeah, does Susan have anything? And then?
No.
Okay.
A public comment is a hand as I've raised.
Yes.
On screen, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, joining us on Zoom. Bruce.
Yeah, hi, this is Bruce Arbenes. I live at 23 Ganapasture Lane in town. I'm also on the Water Resource Committee. And I had some comments. Susan took care of the first one, which was the definition of a tributary. I also wanna mention in terms of the drain from Country Way onto this property. In speaking with the Water Department, apparently there are a couple of other places where they put drains inside the Zone A or Zone 2 areas, which is problematic. So now we're chasing the town to try and see if they can get those out of there. Just as an aside, that hasn't taken place yet, but we are in process. Anthony, you know, the bylaw is pretty clear, no exceptions in that 150-foot space. That's the position of the Water Resource Committee. Me, as a citizen of the town, I agree 100% with you. I think if the applicant is willing to spend whatever's required and like you, I can't define what that is in this particular situation. I do wanna note that with my nifty Google altitude app, the corner, again, this is fairly inaccurate because it's a sense of the slope on the site. The corner Country Way and Williamsburg, again, according to my nifty Google altitude app, 82 feet. The back corner, where the swale begins, 68 feet. I'm not sure of the pitch, if it's a kind of a steady pitch or if it's relatively flattened and scales down. I didn't walk the property, certainly. But there is some pitch at the back of the property towards the swale. So following along at home, there was some discussion about an area that would be a natural filter area towards that corner. I couldn't really tell from the discussion where the plan, what that truly entails. You know, is there a berm included to stop some of the water flow from the property down towards that corner? I could not tell. But
Can you speak? Oh. Sorry.
Just kinda generalize. Again, getting back to the point that we can't tell if that, what's proposed is sufficient to protect the tributary adequately. And we probably need an expert to come in and help us with that.
Bruce, what would that look like, getting an expert to come in and help us with that?
You know, I don't know. I would have to go out and do some research to find the right kind of person. Some kind of civil engineer, I'm not sure.
Bruce? The tributary, the primary source of water flowing through that tributary currently is runoff from Country Way. Is that right?
You know, I really can't tell unless you're there observing during a heavy rain. It's hard to tell if more is coming from Country Way or just runoff from the properties around that area.
Okay, but it's not.
I would say that it is dry, right? If it's not raining, there's no water running down on a consistent basis.
So it's a drainage swale at the end of the day. It tributes to the reservoir.
Yes.
But it's a drainage swale and it's a drainage swale that the town has chosen to collect water from one of our more popular public ways.
Yeah, I mean, the Eastman goes straight to the drain manhole on Roughwood.
Yeah.
It's wherever that collects.
And you see my dilemma in that if I put myself in council's shoes and I come to this board and get this variance denied, I'm gonna tell my client I think I can get it overturned at appeal. I'm gonna walk into the appeal and I'm gonna say the town wouldn't let us build on this lot, even though we proposed conditions and restrictions in our deed and we proposed a state-of-the-art septic system and a vegetated buffer and the town said, no, that poses a risk to their water source even while they fully admitted that they were draining a public way into their water source.
Didn't he also say the town's looking to take these drains out?
Yeah, but here's the problem. If we take the drain out, I think I'm gonna be able to argue on appeal that it's not a tributary anymore.
Well, again, from our perspective, the definition of tributary in this sense is if water runs down that, does it end up in the reservoir? And the answer is yes.
Right. But would water run in that site if it wasn't for the drain and the pipe? I think it would move. I mean, it did move in 1986. So we, I, it's arguably a man-made tributary, right? We made it be in that place. It's a tributary and it's subject to the bylaw. I don't think there's any argument on that front.
Yeah.
But I also am not sure there's any argument that it's a tributary because the town of Situate chose to drain a public way there. And that makes it hard to argue that they can't have a house there without defeating the purpose and intent of the bylaw. And that's where I'm stuck.
Yeah, I agree with that point. I, you know, it's our position that the town made a mistake and we want them to take it out. But that hasn't happened yet, obviously.
Yes. And this may be something satisfactory to the Water Resource Committee. If we offer a condition where we pay for the installation, pay up to $10,000 for installation of a particle separator on the drain pipe for the town to install, that would while the drain is still there and it's still a tributary.
Yes.
That would help clean the water that's coming off of Country Way.
Yep.
So that would be, I would assume that would be a net benefit. And until such time as the town of Situate can rid itself of the drainage of the high pipe.
Yeah, I didn't mean, that was not in frustration, that was just a bigger problem than I thought. I apologize.
So you guys abandoned the pipe and moved that?
Excuse me?
Did you abandon the pipe?
Not their pipe.
Not their pipe.
Yeah. But if, agreed upon by the town.
What do you mean?
You'd have to have some.
It has to go somewhere. Yeah, I know, they're gonna redirect it.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, if they got rid of this pipe, that drainage is still gonna be there. It's just, if the pipe's gone, it's gonna go somewhere else. And it's probably gonna go on people's property, so that's a large.
Part of the redirection of the program that a lot of us see contribute to that.
That's a municipal fix that way behind our law. But given that the pipe is there, this is what we can offer, at least make that water that's coming off of Country Way clean. Less dirty.
Also, also, that's what's kind of knocking our back.
Well, I wouldn't say that, but. That's almost.
Well, why would we make it clean? Well, that's only particles separated.
You guys know what a particle separator is?
It separates particles. It doesn't separate.
So he doesn't know what a particle separator is. Do you guys know what a particle separator is?
It can also be designed to separate gas, gas and oil.
Yeah.
Um, so that's typically what what you'd be getting as much as particles. Greg, were you involved with the White Ash Farm?
I I was, and it was a very similar condition on that.
And could you perhaps uh recall for the board the?
Yes.
What happened there?
So White White Ash Farm was the three lot subdivision that Bob referenced earlier, which is two or three doors down. That did respect the hundred and fifty foot tributary. That was a little bit different in the fact that those were brand new lots as opposed to this is an existing lot from the fifties.
Yep.
A little bit different scenario. But because of the tributary on that one over there and because it was a special permit for White Ash Farm, the developer placed money, I believe it was five thousand dollars at the time um, to DPW for installation of a particle separator at this location, this very location. Okay, DPW was to have it installed and if they didn't do the work within five years, the developer was going to get his money back. DPW did not do the work. The developer received his money back. Um, I think what we're proposing is is that we would, again, put money in the coffers of the DPW so the work can be performed here. And that would be a benefit to everyone in the town of Situate if this water is cleaned coming off of countryway. Uh, you know, that seems like inadequate sum to for installation of a particle separator at this location.
So that ten thousand dollars could be placed with DPW for the town's discretion to clean the water coming through that tributary, otherwise mitigate the water in connection with this tributary, or to move the drainage system to another location as the town suffered.
Yeah, my my gut instinct is is there's a tremendous amount of water that does come through that pipe. It would be hard to relocate that. Um, you know, I think that is a good location for it. I do think it can be cleaned up though, certainly.
And it wouldn't necessarily need to be for a particle separator or a flux capacitor or anything. It could be whatever the DPW and hopefully they would work with the Water Resource Protection Committee to, excuse me, the Water Resource Committee, to determine how best to use that sum of ten thousand dollars.
I would I would make the argument that he's looking for an expert, a civil engineer, which you are.
That's correct.
You're theoretically an expert. We can consult on matters such as this.
Correct.
Yes.
So.
Others from town would say.
You know what? There's a buy, yeah, there's a buy.
There's a market there.
I'm just saying.
No, but level of expertise.
Level of expertise.
Also, Bruce, what what has troubled me in the past is that CONCOM, the Board of Health, DPW, and Bruce's committee are all notified of these applications when they come in. Yes? Yes. They're not notified of variance applications when they come in, just the town clerk?
Okay.
Oh, CONCOM and planning.
CONCOM and planning and the town clerk are notified of these applications when they come in. Okay, um. Bruce, what do you think? So now we have we have the ability to raise conditions and restrictions that will appear in their deed and be permanent. And we have an offer from the applicant for the sum of ten thousand dollars for the mitigation or alteration of this drainage facility for the purpose of protecting the water course.
Hmm.
And we have a variance standard that says that if a bylaw proposes substantial hardship and if a variance from the bylaw can be granted without derogating from the purpose of the bylaw and without detriment to the public good, that the variance shall be granted. I'm in a tough spot here, I feel like.
Yeah, I hear you. I just, again, unfortunately, I'm not uh, I don't have the background or knowledge of what the mitigating factors are in terms of what actually might happen at that site.
Yeah, I'm Anthony, I'm struggling too with like, what's the best mitigation? We don't know. We want to do the best, we want to do what's right for the benefit of the town and the water supply, but we don't know what we should do.
Well, that does doesn't that argue in favor of of the applicant's putting up a sum for the town to decide what additional mitigation, right? Because they'll want additional mitigation.
I think Bruce and maybe Susan's concern is what if that mitigation costs more than ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, what if it's, that that is my, I know what a particle separator is, but I don't know how much it costs. And I I just actually Googled it. This seems like a big range, so.
It would just.
I mean.
It would be a recommendation by a state civil engineer for a third party state civil engineer really to just approve, right? To review and approve.
Right, we're talking about peer review, correct? Which is going to come somewhat loaded, right? From a like-minded individual, right?
Well, there's a there's a cost to peer review and there's a uh, there's a timing involved in a peer review, right? Um, and we want the applicant to pay for the peer review and the applicant's going to want to know how much that peer review costs and how long it's going to take. Um. Good. Um, but given that variances need to be unanimous, my guess is you want more information about the peer review than we might require rather than making us vote on this without the help of peer review.
Well, that would put me in a tough spot.
It would put you in a tough spot.
No, I said now you would put me in a tough.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, I think you were going to get there anyway. I just I just made the I just made the hearing a little bit shorter by putting it in you in it faster.
Uh, yes, if if you're going down the road of peer review and I understand.
Yes.
I understand what your what your questions are, they're science questions. Um, and I'm not a science guy.
Sure.
Um, then yes, we would like to know who, how much and how.
Yep. Um, all right, before we do that, Bruce, did you have anything else to add? You've been helpful.
Uh, just that I want to thank the applicant for being flexible.
Absolutely, thank you. Does anyone else from the audience have any questions or comments on this application by Williamsburg?
On Zoom or in the room?
Well, how about in the room?
In the room first. Charles Street, New York Lane, sixty-one Main Street in Harlow. Um, I know the bongers owns a considerable amount of time, years and years. Um, I'm extremely familiar with this particular piece of property. I looked at it to try to purchase it a number of years ago.
Yeah.
From Kent, um, in L.A. And uh, I'm familiar with the bylaw with the hundred and fifty foot no-touch sum. And I find it remarkable that anybody who's got a lawn area or out there that isn't asking for a permit can really go out and do whatever they want. They can destroy the vegetation, they can do all kinds of things. It's only the person that's coming in looking for a permit that's going to have the conditions on it to do things the correct way that get put in this particular predicament. But when this thing was written, um, there weren't, nobody was doing these the the innovative alternative subject systems, which Greg has already proposed on this, which should take care of that. I actually have some systems in town and they work fantastic. They do clean the water, they're tested all the time. I have never had a bad test on that, it's been in for years and years. Um, so I think he's taking care of it as far as the septic is concerned. As far as the water that's being generated from this particular site, and I haven't seen the newest plan, but if he has a rain garden on there and the rain gardens work well, um, that'll take care of the water that is coming from this particular site. They clean that water up, so I think that does meet the purpose of the bylaw. And as far as if they're going to do an infiltrator, I know as it's Susan's, um, I put one of these in on Old Oak and Bucket Road on a property that we had as a benefit to the town because we moved the drain line. So we put a downstream defender in. And I think at the time, it was probably between ten and twelve thousand dollars is what it cost for us to install the whole thing. What they'd be installing here, I'm assuming, is exactly the same unit that we would have. And uh, DPW looked very favorably on doing that. And and that worked out well as well. So I think the fact that the old bylaw that we have is still in place that just specifically says you can't touch it is antiquated. I think that Greg has put the stuff on the plan that needs to be done. And I think if you do send it out for review, hopefully the review person will say the same thing, that now we've got all these new stop measures that we can put in that will help protect the reservoir. And I would just hope the board would look favorably on granting the variance if in fact you get that information back.
Thank you. Anybody online? Nope.
No.
All right. What I'm going to propose before I do that. Bruce, would Water Resource be willing to create a short RFP for peer review of necessary mitigation to protect the quality of the water in this tributary? Okay, Bruce, you can hear me, yeah? Oh, you're muted, sorry.
Okay, I thought I unmuted before.
That's okay, um, and specifically with the idea of that there would be a natural vegetated buffer fifty feet from the tributary, the home would be equipped with a FAST system, there would be a restriction for organic fertilizer only. And with the understanding that the applicant has offered ten thousand dollars with respect to mitigation. Now, this would just be an RFP. We want to know how much it would cost for someone to report on that and how long it would take. And I I'm familiar with peer review on forty B projects. We would not be looking for this to be to that extent, obviously. We would really not be looking for that to be anywhere near this extent. We would be looking for some straightforward comments that could hopefully be reflected in one or two pages of material. I I do not need to be educated, and I think I speak for the board on the science behind the effectiveness of the FAST system or things like that. We we really want a uh, a not a ten thousand foot recommendation, but maybe a twenty-five hundred foot recommendation from a peer review engineer. It's it's the it's the opinion of this applicant and their engineer that what they are proposing would equal runoff into this tributary that was better than the water that you'd find in there currently. And I'd I'd like to know how much and how long it would take for our peer review engineer to confirm that, yes?
If I could, it goes to that point. Um, to the extent you're going to go down the peer review road.
Yes.
We'd also like them, the peer review engineer, to test the water that's coming out of the pipe and into the tributary so we have a baseline of what we're dealing with as far as water quality coming out of that pipe.
Sure, I I so you just added a a task to the peer review engineer that's going to come potentially at at your cost and at your time.
I understand that, but to the to the extent we're talking about what's the quality of the water coming off our property.
Right.
I think it important that you bookend that with what's the quality of the water that's coming out of the pipe and into that tributary.
We and we'd like the RFP to include the cost and analysis of a water test of water in that tributary.
Okay, okay.
Would um the Water Resource Committee be be open to uh, trying to draft that RFP? And and potentially suggesting a a a couple of folks that we could reach out to?
Yeah, so I need to talk to Becky about that, but yes, I will. I will suggest that we do that.
Okay.
I I would need some information, um, the plan that you were presenting before.
Yes.
I'd like to get my hands on that material.
We can, we could get you, we can make a copy of all the materials from the application available for Water Resource to to pick up in the building office.
Okay, good. Uh, you know, we'll start the discussions probably tomorrow. But we have a meeting next, I think it's Tuesday or Wednesday.
No problem. Okay, Tuesday.
Yep.
And you you could follow up with with myself and and Janine and Bob directly via email.
Okay.
Once you have some information on that. And my recommendation would be that we continue now to June with potentially the, yes?
Just a suggestion, Anthony, on the process. I think it could be streamlined and sort of compacted uh by using the four firms or going, looking at the four firms that have already been identified or already actually under contract for peer review to the town.
Great.
And the RFP process for public work, which this kind of falls into, um, if the cost is less than, I forget if it's ten or five thousand dollars, uh, can be very streamlined, can be a letter uh, or even a telephone uh call to uh, you know, the uh, competing firms uh, firms that probably give us proposals. I I'm not exactly sure of those details, but I can find out certainly in the morning.
If would you be willing to shoot a quick email to uh Bruce and and Becky Malmont, who is the chair of the committee? And uh, and just copy me with the information on that so that we can aid him in in preparing that? I I would absolutely like to streamline this as much as possible. I I think it's a good process. I think it's a good idea. I think there's a benefit for the town here. And and I'd and I'd like to make these gentlemen and future applicants be open to this process. So so I think it'd be great if we could streamline it and and we get that done.
The other thing I was wondering about is that person who's most capable uh, and can most easily create the sort of uh parameters in the RFP is Mr. Morse, since he knows what he plans to do and what he's trying to achieve. I don't know if that's a conflict or 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 not, but uh.
So.
You know, we're we're going to try and make this up from a non-scientific, non, we don't have the experience, is what I'm saying.
Greg.
To ask the right questions.
I think I understand what Bob is saying in that if you gave us a one or two pager stating this is my opinion of the water in the tributary and what this tributary is doing plus or minus to the water source. And this is what a home would do to the tributary without any of these mitigation factors. And this is what a home with these mitigation factors would do to the tributary. And then maybe if you felt like it, and here's a couple of ideas of what you could do with uh, four, five, six, ten thousand dollars, given the not entirely clean nature of what the town is putting into the tributary. It could possibly be easier to put that in front of our peer review engineer and they could say, oh, I totally agree, oh, I don't agree, this is because and yeah, he's right, but I think he's not considering this.
I could absolutely put something like that together and have that, I'm pretty sure.
And again, this isn't sixty units on the Driftway. We recognize. And again, this isn't sixty units on the Driftway. We recognize that and and uh, so we're we're looking to have this be, we'd like the science to be just as precise as a major peer review, but um, but the the time and the cost to not be hopefully. I I think that might streamline the process. It allows your side to start the conversation. Um, and then if you could attach your plan, that makes it a lot easier for Water Resource to take a look at it, Bob, to take a look at it. And us to put it in front of, I agree completely, the four or five engineers that the town has under contract. Do we want to add product data for that separator, a copy of that?
I'm looking to do that as an appendix to it.
Yeah. Uh, yes, Mr. Bruce.
If I could just make one more suggestion possibly. Uh, obviously, as you guys know, this process costs the Long Island tremendous amount of money. We go through the engineering on this.
Yeah.
And and I would just ask the board if there's any way to get some type of a consensus that if the consultant agrees that they are cleaning the water, will this board look favorably on granting the variance? If it comes back that the water will be cleaner?
So I, I I I've I've already indicated that I I was leaning towards thinking this property deserves a variance. And but there's some concerns that some other members of the board would suggest. I I show my hand as much as anyone probably in the history of this board. I think I want to stop at saying a we're going to if. Um, but let's let's put it this way, if if Mr. Morse and a peer review engineer agree that it's going to be the same or better if the house is there, either we're going to give a variance or they're going to have that in their back pocket if they want to appeal a variance. Um, so I I think, I understand what you're saying. Let's see what Mr. Morse does. Obviously, there's there's an additional cost in that. Then we'll try to get some, an idea from a peer review engineer of the time and cost there. And we're not, we also didn't deny you yet without peer review. We're just continuing to try to wrap our heads around what that would look like and figuring out a next best step.
And that's why I'm trying to say there are no other issues other than will this clean the water? Can they clean the water? There's no other outlined issues on the variance other than can they clean the water?
It's, we boiled this down to the intent of the bylaw and being able to grant a variance without killing the intent of the bylaw. The intent of the bylaw is, you know, keep the our water clean. I think that's that's pretty much given.
Again, these are variances. They have to be unanimous, right? So everybody's gonna vote how they're gonna vote, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so well, I'd I'd like to propose a continuance for thirty days if that works for the applicant. Now, with the idea that that I'll I'll try to work with with water and and the town, try to get you some information on a peer reviewer in advance of that. I I imagine that by the time we figure that out, by the time we get what we need from you, we get it in front of a peer reviewer, probably not gonna have that back by our June meeting. And we we probably end up continuing to July. Um.
But, but I mean, I think that's the right check in now. I mean, in case we have to change the process.
Yeah, I I it might, I mean, let's try for July. Great, then let's do that.
What's what's your date?
I will.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
We're, I mean, clearly the board's not wanting to delay this.
Right, no, oh, I I wasn't with you guys. I didn't see it, yeah. Yep. Um, the continuance works for the applicant. That that makes sense. And so I would make a motion for continuance to the June sixteenth season. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Greg, Bob, you were sent some information on that, that peer review process. And Greg, you'll keep us posted on how long it would need to get that done?
Well, I'll try to get that to you early next week.
That would be amazing. Thank you. Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, we are going to move on to our eighth application brought by James C. and Catherine Wolf of Seventeen Buttonwood Lane in Stituette, requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty eight, section six. In section eight, ten point two, the Stituette zoning by law and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at Seventeen Buttonwood Lane in Stituette, increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty percent.
Oh, great. Great, great, great. You're more sophisticated here. Representing property owners James and Catherine Wolf. Property is located at Seventeen Buttonwood Lane. Looking at the plan, the property line is a black line showing a gold. Buttonwood Lane is on the right-hand side. On the left-hand side, we also have frontage on Bayberry Road at the back of the lot. This is a request under section eight, ten point two of the bylaw to allow the raise and reconstruct of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling at this address. This property is in the R two zoning district. The existing home was built circa nineteen hundred. It's approximately two thousand one hundred and thirty-five square feet. The non-conformities out here, the lot is non-conforming with respect to lot area. It has nine thousand one hundred and forty-eight where square feet for twenty thousand square feet is required. It has eighty feet of frontage where a hundred feet is required. The existing home is non-compliant with respect to side yard setbacks. They exist at eleven point nine feet and twelve feet or fifteen feet is required in the district. The front yard setback with respect to Buttonwood is non-compliant at eighteen point six feet versus thirty feet. Lot width is non-compliant. Lot width is at eighty feet where a hundred and twenty-five is required in the district. I would add that the property is also located in the FEMA floodplain. Uh, it is not in the floodplain overlay district, but FEMA floodplain. Uh, the existing home is non-FEMA compliant. The proposal here is to take down the dwelling and construct a new dwelling largely in the same location. I've highlighted the proposed dwelling in brown on site plan here. Uh, this would be a fully compliant FEMA foundation. Uh, the home would be three thousand and eighty square feet. It represents a forty-four point three percent increase. Uh, it's generally again in the same location, but we increased the the front yard setback from eighteen point six existing. We're bringing it back to nineteen point six. In the side yards, we're bringing those into better compliance as well. Side yards existing at eleven point nine, we're bringing that to fourteen feet on the north side of the house. And on the south side of the house where it exists at twelve, we're bringing that to thirteen feet. We're obviously not changing the non-conforming lot area, lot width or frontage. There are similar homes, three thousand square feet in size in the neighborhood. No deal.
So the, I'm looking at the southern boundary of the property. The existing structure that is twelve and twelve point one feet from the property line is a a a carport, yes?
Yes, covered portico.
I got you. And that's gonna be a garage. That's gonna become a garage.
With with living space above it, the living space above it.
Yeah. Really, um. Gotcha.
Clarification, so because that's dripwater covered, it's a part of that, that's what the setback's count is for?
It, because it has a roof, it is subject to the setback. Now, that has been a point of discussion when converting non-living space that was within the setback to living space that was in the setback. In the past, that's been covered in these hearings. I don't know that we've ever denied an application just for that, but we've talked about it. It's not as automatic as if that was living space now in in our past discussions, at least. Um, otherwise, everywhere. I I don't see much elsewhere discussion. Um. You know, and also, well, I think that there hasn't been further discussion for that type of change. We're in a fifteen-foot-sized setback zone and we're twelve, thirteen, fourteen. And so it's, uh, it's not that concerning. Put in a little plunge pool. Like it?
Yep.
Um, why is it complying with setbacks given our pool trouble lately? Um. I don't, uh, Susan, any questions?
I don't, not on this one.
George?
No. I don't have questions. From the streets, other one going from eighteen, six and seven to nineteen six, and on both, right, Chris, no?
Bob, anything to add?
Uh, no, no, glad that it's recognized. Needs to meet FEMA design, well, it's floor elevation and foundation design. That's good. It'll be the historic commission's blessing to take down the house. It's over a hundred years old.
Wow.
Pretty special.
Um, first floor, this is going up a bit, huh?
The first, the first floor, I think, actually exists in seventeen. And we're gonna be going back close, close to that with the first floor.
It's not, it's not.
It's not going up that much. It's just the type of foundation under elevation of the utilities.
Right, yeah. Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments on this application? Or instance, those joining us on Zoom? No questions or comments? Anyone here? No. I will make a motion that the proposed single-family dwelling at Seventeen Button Lane, Buttonwood Lane, shown on a plan drawn by Morse Engineering dated four fourteen twenty-two, does not create any new non-conformities. And to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Last one. I don't, I think there's someone on Zoom.
Uh, Janine, I'll do, I'll do that one. Our ninth application brought by Edward Johnson of Candy Construction for Byron and Constance Leach of Fifty Hazel Avenue, requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL forty eight, section six, and section eight, ten point two of the Stituette zoning by law and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at Fifty Hazel Avenue in Stituette. Hello?
Hello.
Yes.
Gregory Morris, representing the applicant, Candy Construction. Uh, this is a continued hearing. I presented this to the board last month. Uh, since that time, we submitted a revised plan to significantly change the footprint of the house. You know, the plan in front of you, uh, to re-familiarize you with this property. Uh, Fifty Hazel Avenue is in the R three zoning district. Uh, existing home built eighteen ninety-five. It's approximately seventeen hundred square feet. Uh, the non-conformities of the frontage on Hazel Ave, existing at seventy-six point five eight feet where a hundred is required. Uh, and then the front yard setback to Harbor Heights Road, existing at twenty-three point eight feet. Harbor Heights Road is a private street. I want to be clear that the applicant has no rights and we're not proposing to do any work or any access to Harbor Heights Road. Proposed new single-family home I highlighted in brown on the plan here. Uh, it's approximately two thousand nine hundred and eighty-four square feet in size. It represents a seventy-three point nine percent increase. Uh, it complies with the front yard to Hazel, the side yard and the rear yard setbacks. Uh, but the setback to Harbor Heights Road where it exists at twenty-three point eight feet, we are proposing an intensification proposing at seventeen point four feet. If you recall, our previous proposal held it essentially as a side yard setback. We had originally proposed an eight-foot setback to Harbor Heights. Our proposal scales it back to a seventeen point four-foot setback. While it is an intensification, uh, we don't think that it is detrimental to any of the butters or to this neighborhood. We don't feel that it's detrimental to anyone that does have rights in Harbor Heights Road. It has no impact on that street, the utilities or the constructability of that street or the rights of anyone to pass a route pass. We turn it over to you.
I think that, um, is really what we were looking for. I I understood your side setback argument. I understood the argument against your side setback argument. And I think this makes a lot more sense to me. Um. And I I was just in in more keeping with what we try to do with streets like this. Um, and I appreciate the applicant coming back with a uh, with a meaningful modification to the plan. Anyone else?
No.
Susan?
I still see it as a corner lot.
Yeah.
And I would want it more conforming to the building envelope. I mean, you go down there, I wonder if that's a road with three rocks in front of it right now, if it's a road.
Right, uh, so keeping in mind, not a new non-conformity. The existing home is not, was twenty-three point eight feet from the street. And now they're going seventeen four. I I would, that would be a variance application if the existing home complied with the corner lot setback. And I think that was the big difference.
And then again, on Hays Lab, they're conforming, they're even more conforming as they're proposing further back.
But Hays Lab wasn't part of the argument. And did you, will you get a setback on Harbor Heights?
I did, and there were no homes within two hundred feet of this location on this side of Harbor Heights.
And that's.
So I didn't get that slide. So you can't, you can't actually understand.
Yeah. Um, you know, I think remembering from our our last hearing, uh, it it was a, it was an intensification that we would have looked down on in other applications. Going from twenty-three point eight to, I think it was eight, eight point one and a half was a was a thick much. Um, going from twenty-three point eight to seventeen and a half essentially is more in line with what we we felt comfortable with with intensifications in the past. Um, also arguably a thirty-foot setback from this road. And I, it is probably more than is necessary. I I don't know that Harbor Heights meets the same setback that uh, Hays Lab, like country way needs.
Or country way new Driftway needs.
Um. That's really where we were coming from. I, if it wasn't already non-conforming, I I would totally agree with you. Um. There you go. It makes sense. Um, Janine, anything else? No, I I think you said already.
Nobody there.
Bob?
I'm good.
Yeah. Um. Do we have anyone left on, yes, sir, your name?
My name is Mark Lomaker, Ninety-five Berry Road. I used to reside in Fifty Hazel.
Okay.
Ryan Jimm, speaking solo. Yeah, I'm concerned that you're addressing Harbor Heights Road as a paper street that goes all the way through from Front Street to Hazel Ave. Now, being a resident there, I have a personal knowledge that that property in Hazel Ave, Harbor Heights section, that the paper street never got continued on any deeds from a certain point prior to the Hazel Ave property to Hazel Ave. In fact, it's owned by a private concern. In fact, it's owned by a private concern under a private deed or was as of two thousand and fifteen. We had the permission to use that property from the existing people who owned it. And we had, probably the town or whatever. And the town admitted also that it wasn't a paper street all the way through. And that, that area is not owned by the town nor can it be accessed as a, you know, a private road or whatever through to the Front Street side.
Okay, so you're calling it the corner lot. I mean, I don't know why they're not using, or gonna use that Harbor Heights as access to the property, which is always allowed up until the entire length of residence is open.
We've only been able to access through that dirt area to the back garage into the property. So, sorry, where, where are the stones there? Shouldn't have no per, had no permission to do it. Nor should those stones that exist there. Because they weren't what they're needed, sure. Which is, I guess, another problem, but, uh, it's not, it's not, that's what I'm concerned about.
You're concerned about the, the stones and the blocking of access?
Calling the paper, Harvard Heights there a paper street.
So I, I didn't, I didn't mean, actually, I'm not sure. I didn't call it a paper street. It's a private web.
But it's not. It hasn't been continued anywhere, shape, form, up to Hazel Ave.
So you are contesting that it is privately owned and others don't have easement rights in it?
That's correct.
Okay, I, if that is true.
That they don't even chase our setbacks.
Then they don't need to comply with the thirty-foot setback.
Correct.
They are not contending that here.
Correct.
So it sounds like you're contending it. Uh, they could have, uh, they could have run title to Harbor Heights Road and, and argued that it's privately owned and it's just an easement and not tantamount to a private road. And we would have heard that, but they didn't, and this is there.
I, 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 I knew, knew that information, that's why it was. From what I understood, that's why I came up here. I didn't know Mr. Morse was talking about this property here. I was hoping to see the builder and the, the person who bought it.
Sure.
So, Mr. Morse being here presenting all this.
Yeah.
Is new to me.
Okay.
Last year, right?
Sure.
Which, if anything.
Makes it even, is more of an argument to allow the setbacks as proposed. So, thank you.
So thank you.
Anyone else present on Zoom? No, no hands raised, no video on? We're good? I'll make a motion to the Board find that the proposed, is it a re-construction, refresh my memory?
Yes.
Yes. That the proposed dwelling on the plan drawn by Morse Engineering and dated two twenty-four twenty-two and revised five twelve twenty-two does not create any new non-conformities. And to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 You guys have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. There we go. Janine, we have minutes?
March, April.
We have March and April. Motion to approve the March and April minutes as circulated by Janine.
I need to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. There we go. And motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.